Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Do Good Podcast. My name is Oscar Rivas and this podcast is going to focus on talking to people who are doing really good things around the community. People who are lending a hand to the town of Cornwall, New York and trying to make it a better place. And today we have a very special guest. He's a loving husband, a father of two beautiful daughters. And he's also a very talented creative director for a company in San Francisco called Think Mojo, I believe.
That's right.
And on his spare time, he decided to join the school board because he had nothing else to do. And now he takes slack from a lot of people. So let's welcome Brendan Carty. Brendan, thank you.
Thanks, Oscar.
So yeah, so tell, let's talk a little bit about Cornwall. It's a wonderful little town. What brings you to Cornwall? How did you find out about the sound and what made you come up here?
So the year was 2014. So Bridgette and I were probably like a lot of people that ended up moving here. We were outgrowing where we lived. We had been living in Jersey City for 10 years. We had our first daughter was one going on two. And Bridget wanted to, well, we, I'm sorry, we wanted to have a second, second child.
We, sure.
Bridget was the first one to bring it up and I immediately recognized that it was a brilliant idea. So, uh, yeah, but we were in essentially a one and a half bedroom apartment in Jersey City, right on a bus line. So every 90 seconds, the bus, the new bus came up and right below where my daughter was sleeping, you know? So that was, that made early sleep, uh, you know, a joy.
The joys of the city.
Yeah. Uh, so we, uh, we just kind of did an open search. It really wasn't like we knew we wanted to even go to the Hudson Valley. We just kind of did like, all right, 50, 60 mile radius in any direction and we just started going. And we kind of made the bet that, well, I'll probably be working remote for a while because through my, my job, I work remotely. Turned out to be a good bet. I think that anyone that's planning on working remotely for a while longer is, is gonna, uh, is gonna realize that they were right. But we randomly, the connection to Cornwall is so slight, it's hardly even worth mentioning. We had a friend who used to work, we had a friend whose in-law used to work, used to work at Storm King School.
Okay.
So all this means is that when we saw Cornwall appear like on our Zillow results, we were like Cornwall, I've heard of that, you know? So we, we gave it a shot and we drove up and before we had a real estate agent or anything, we just drove up, looked around and, and I still remember we, we got off nine W at Angola Road. And we immediately were like, this feels right, you know? And so that was pretty much it. And then we, you know, and then we went through the actual process of looking at actual houses and all that. But our hearts were, uh, our hearts were captured right when we, we drove through, but it's just like anybody else, you know, school system. We wanted a little bit more bang for the buck, you know? So in that way, you know, the story is not unique. I mean, it's, it's great, but it's not unique. A lot of people have, have, uh, have been through it. And we, we have not regretted it a single day that we've been here.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's, um, my wife and I, we met in the city as well. So it was kind of, uh, but she was born and raised here. We have like five generations of our family that have been in the same road, like one right next to each other. So for us, it wasn't like even a question. It was kind of like, okay, this is where we're from. Let's just go check it out and we'll live there. So that's kind of like where we came from. So I was like, and but I, you know, very, I very quickly, even when I first met her and started coming visiting her family, I just fell in love with the small town. The fact that everybody kind of knew each other, which she kind of like sometimes like kind of like a double edged sword that everybody can knows each other. So you can't even like go outside without looking your best or whatever. But, uh, for me, it was great because I come from big cities like Miami and Orlando, and I lived in LA and I lived in different places. So when people like recognize me in the stores, like, oh, that's great. It's fantastic. So I love it.
That's kind of, yeah, I mean, I, we laughed at it. Bridget says that Cornwall is just like her town. So she grew up in Belmar, New Jersey. So a small beach town. So she says it's just like Belmar, but in the mountains. And I do not have the same kind of corollary. For me, it's, I agree with you. It's completely different than anything that I've, I've, any place I've lived before. I grew up in Mount Vernon. So, you know, it's just a much different place than, than here. I lived in Jersey City, obviously, New Orleans, a couple of other places, but you know, places that would not, would not have prepared me for the small town life. So yeah, there was like a little suspicion at first, like, why is everyone being so nice to me, you know? What cult is everybody in? You know, it's like, there was a little bit of like Rosemary's baby going on, you know, like there was going to be this surprise at the end that, you know, they're all conspiring against me. But no, people are just that nice. And that, that suspicion has worn away, you know? I couldn't believe how much people loved living here. That was the thing that struck me like the first year that we lived here. People just volunteering how much they love living in Cornwall.
Yeah.
Uh, and it, and now we're one of those people too. People move here and we, you know, we just gush about it ourselves.
Yeah, I know. It's funny. I talked to some of the business owners in town and they'll be talking to the kids and whatever, and they just love, even the kids. Normally most kids are like, oh, I hate that. They say that. The kids love.
Where is your teenage cynicism?
Yeah, I know exactly. It's like even the kids love living here. So it's like even my nephews, they go like jumping off cliffs or whatever, running in the river. Or they give me to ride their bikes with their friends and they go to this corner store and get whatever they need. Like, you know, in a big city like Miami, you would never do that. It's very rare for kids to do something like that. I remember having to go to the movies and walking like 30 blocks with four lane highways in between to just try to walk to the movie. So. So it's good to see that the kids love, you know, appreciate that as well here. Now let's learn a little bit about you. Let's learn, uh, you're a creative director for kind of creative agency. What does that mean? And, um, tell us a little bit about what you're gonna do.
Yeah. So this is a, for people, I feel like the, the creative slash advertising industry is at a different place than people's understand. People still like think of the advertising world and like through the lens of Mad Men, you know, like there's these big agencies that do everything that they come up with the branding. They film the creative and then they go out and they place the ads everywhere on TV.
It's all TV commercials.
And it's all, it's all TV commercials and it's all cigarettes and Coca-Cola, you know? But that's not how it is at all. I mean, there's those agencies still exist, but they represent a decreasingly, a decreasing portion of the overall industry. So when I try to tell people like, if I try to tell them accurately what it is, they don't understand. As I say, it's a creative agency, which kind of sounds like, uh, what does that even mean? You know, but we're not, we're technically not an advertising agency because we don't place the ads and, you know, do all the business side. We are, we are, we create the actual ads and by ads even that could be a television ad. That could be a, you know, YouTube pre-roll ad. It could be a 90 second or two minute quote unquote explainer video. That appears on, you know, websites and, and attempt, you know, possibly goes viral. It could be 10 second ad that appears in your social media feed. So, but that's what we do. It's, it's all video focused. So we don't do like print ads and, you know, in magazines and stuff. But, um, and we, you know, from a client standpoint, we work with, um, as you mentioned, we're in the Bay area. We're, we're, our home is in the Bay area. So naturally we get a lot of Silicon Valley clients, a lot of, uh, you know, some of, some of our clients are, you know, names that you'll have heard of, you know, all, all the big Silicon Valley tech companies. But then some of the more exciting ones are like those well-funded startups that are like, you know, pop up out of like MIT or something that are doing this like crazy thing. And, you know, this crazy AI thing that, you know, and we're the first agency they work with and it's our job to essentially create content that just explains what they do. I actually enjoyed those the most because that really, it, you, you, it's exciting whenever you can get in the room, quote unquote, on a zoom call really. With people that are doing something that nobody else is doing.
Right.
You know, so just from a intellectual stimulation standpoint, I think those are, those are my favorite kinds of clients.
Yeah, those can be great clients because you're kind of introducing them into the world. So you get to tell their story and also make them connect with the audience, you know, that's out there. I think advertising has changed a lot through the years before us, but the splashy ads and the crazy, who's creating the most buzz after the Superbowl or the Oscars or whatever it is. And now we're so content heavy that, you know, having, making a connection with a specific company or a specific brand or whatever it is. It goes a long ways, no matter how you do it, whether it's a TV ad or, you know, a YouTube video or something you put on Facebook or Instagram now, or a TikTok. Or there's so many different platforms now to communicate that has changed the game so much.
And I think, you know, this is, I'm going to use a word that is so overused in our industry, but authenticity is, is so key. But it is a challenge when you, you look at the younger demographic, which I'm going to pretend like still includes us. But it's really everyone who's younger than us and some people who are much younger than us. They have the, the, as an old teacher of mine would have said, their, uh, their crap detectors are very well defined. And you really, that is something you have to contend with at all times. And one of the ways to, you know, make that authentic connection is to just, just tell people, you know, explain something well, or make, make a point really well. Tell a story, you know, that's what the long form advertising, 90 second, two minute videos, those do very well on, on YouTube and, and different channels. Because they, they don't rely on just the pithy one liner, you know, that people see through. They actually tell, they dive in and tell a story and give the audience a little bit of credit, you know, they don't talk down to the audience. And I think that's, that's like one of the, the keys to unlocking the whole authenticity thing.
Yeah. Telling a story now is so important compared to what it was back in the day. Before it was about grabbing your attention and getting you to go somewhere to buy something. Now it's about a narrative about a story. And being a good storyteller goes much further than whatever, you know, camera you're shooting it on, or however big your budget is. You could be shooting something on your iPhone. If the story is captivating and it's engaging, then you're going to get the read though.
And I would add, it's not just a story contained to one asset, right? It's not just the one 30 second ad or 90 second video. It's across the entire campaign. So you may have, you know, a 10 second social media ad and you might have a 30 second pre-roll and, and TV ad and all that. But it's how all these things work together. Maybe one only tells part of the story. Maybe, maybe one of those only introduces the story. And then the other part, you know, it's almost like looking at a campaign as like a three act structure, the way that you would put together a movie. And then figuring out where, what part of the story is going to appear on what channel, like that's, that's an interesting way. I think something that brands are luckily becoming more cognizant of. It was much harder, I found a few years ago, to get people to sign on to these like longer campaigns at the beginning. Let me just see how it goes, you know? No, you need to commit to this, this story, this strategy. Would you, would you green light the first 10 minutes of a movie? No, you, you'd write the whole movie at once.
Yeah. No, it's really, you know, looking back at the early days of YouTube, you know, it's funny how some of those same story beats that you're talking about and making it a longer cohesive story. Kind of followed through the years. Remember the lonely girl? When it first started, lonely girl 115? It was this girl who was like, kind of like talking to the camera and like there was stuff happening to her life, but people didn't know.
Oh, the YouTuber.
Yeah, the YouTuber, yeah.
Yeah.
So that kind of like started like the whole like continued continuity.
I wonder how she's doing these days. I want, I worry about her, but she.
We gotta check there.
Yeah, she, but her legacy is strong.
Yeah, but even I see that even so today on TikTok, there was a guy talking about his girlfriend supposedly cheating on him and he's creating this whole elaborate story. And it's broken into several parts so that you click the follow button. So you see what's going on or what's really happening. And every like minute it ends in a cliffhanger. It's like, okay, so what happens next? So what happens next?
It's incredible. It's something that I, I try to get across to, to clients all the time. It's like, don't tell them everything. You have to leave them wanting more. The goal is never to just get them to think, wow, that was a really great viewing experience. No, you want them to do something after they've seen it. You want them to go buy your product, go to your website, whatever. But you've got to leave them off in that, in that cliffhanger moment. There's, that's always an argument with people. Oh, but we still haven't said this. It's like, that's intentional, you know, we're not just forgetting, you know, it's, we gotta leave, leave them wanting.
Yeah. It's, uh, I saw a TED Talk from one of the creators from, uh, was it Wally or one of the Pixar directors? And he was saying, you always got to give them two plus two equals four. Let them figure out what, what the, what the answer is. Don't you tell them it's four. You just gotta give them two plus two. And then they let them like little by little, figure out the equation, figure out the answer. So then they feel more rewarded about actually getting there. So.
It's like the mystery storytelling technique. Yeah. You don't just have this one big, you know, soliloquy where you explain everything that's going on. Like you allow them, that's why true crime is so popular. Cause it involves the audience. You're looking over the detective's shoulder and you're piecing it together and you're figuring it out, uh, you know, at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. Now, you know, so there are definitely some challenges when you have an agency in San Francisco and you're working from here in New York. Tell us about your brilliant idea to decide to work from home and how it's paying off now to this whole pandemic.
Well, it looks pretty smart now, Oscar. So I, yeah, I mean, we, we started as a virtual company and the reason was just very, very simple. We, we didn't want, I mean, we all, I was a freelancer first, you know, and this was at this point, I mean, it's only nine years ago.
You're so old.
I am, God, I know. I don't tell, I used to say on client calls, you know, how long we have all been working together and, uh, to like, you know, to kind of make it seem like we're real, like official. And now I don't do it anymore because like age is becoming like a real liability. Like nine years ago, I was in middle school nine years ago, you know? And that's the guy signing the checks, you know? So, uh, but yeah, I mean, we, uh, so it started off just freelancing and, you know, kind of the Think Mojo wasn't really a company. We kind of formed the company together, me and, uh, uh, the, the two co-founders. I mean, I give them credit. They co-founded the company. But then, you know, I, I came on, uh, you know, right as we were getting like real clients. But it was just a thing of like, we're not, we all live in different places. Like we're not moving together. We've got Skype. You know, this is, you know, when people were still on Skype, that's how long ago it was.
Well done, Microsoft.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, yeah, and for a while it was kind of like something that we would avoid explaining to people like, why are you all in separate places? It doesn't seem, you know, the thing that we would always tell people is like, well, you can't tell creative people where to live. Meanwhile, it was like, we can't afford to live in the same place. But now over time, what was something I started noticing was we would have big clients like Anheuser Busch or something, right? And they would be on a call all in separate locations, you know, instead of huddled around one conference table. And we were, you know, in four or five different windows on Skype. Everybody was, it was a million windows because everybody, even at the big companies were working remotely. Somebody was out of Nashville, somebody was out of St. Louis, New York, et cetera. That's when we, and that was like 2016, 17, we're like, oh, this is, that's good. That's a good sign. And now, you know, obviously everybody's doing it and a lot more people will do it. But I, I have found it is, it would be very difficult, I think, for me to go back to, I say back to, I've never really done it in office environment. Where, uh, I didn't have my own space, you know, and it's not just physical space. There's, there's a mental space that comes with that too. So we were very fortunate to already be set up to work like this. And, uh, you know, we do our live shoots in, uh, in the Bay area. And so that, you know, occasionally, you know, you'll have to be on site for that. But we, we have our full live action team, director, um, DP, director of photography, cinematographers, all that stuff, you know, out there and they're on the ground. But other than that, it's, you know, the creative stuff happens through Slack and, you know, zoom calls. And we have, we do a lot of animation, which is all done remotely as well. So it works pretty seamlessly.
No, it's great. It's great that you can do that. I mean, for me, like, I feel like sometimes I miss having the camaraderie and like being in a place with people and interacting and things like that. But I feel like even that's changed a lot through the years. When I first started editing, you know, I had my own edit suite. And an edit suite was like a big place. That's the place where you went and you sat down and the creatives came in and they, you know, it's like an experience, right? Later on through the years, it became a thing where it's like, I was outside in the bullpen with like a whole bunch of other people. You know, just with the whole open creative workspace, it changed through, through time. And then I was like, instead of having in a beautiful room, like nicely decorated with like the right lighting to make sure that the colors are right. You were sitting in an iMac outside with like 25 other people. And it was just like, this is kind of harder to edit this way now, you know? So we'll see if things change now. A lot of people are going to be working from home. There's going to be a lot more space in the offices. Maybe they will go back to a different environment. We'll see.
I'll tell you the, uh, one trend that I, I hope is discontinued is the whole Peter Pan's playhouse, let's just call it, of the Silicon Valley workspace. Where, and you know, I have, when I would go on, we, we, we suspended our office now just because there's no reason to. We have, uh, historically, we've had an office, um, out in California. But everybody is just sort of, you know, that's on a to be determined basis. But when we would go in, you know, we, uh, we shared the building with another company. And so we would walk through the lobby and there would be like Lego setup, you know, nap stations, you know, we're just like, what is this? So I would think that, you know, maybe, you know, shared sleeping spaces, maybe something that, you know, the pandemic rightly puts an end to. And maybe that'll be the only silver lining if we get one. Um, but yeah, that, that trend, uh, is probably on the way up.
It's a crazy thing because when you think about it, they're just finding more ways for you to stay at work.
Yes, exactly. A hundred percent.
It's like, why go out to lunch? Here's all the free lunch.
Very cultish, you know?
Yeah, it's like, oh.
Why would you ever leave, Tom?
You want to exercise? Here's a volleyball court. You wanted to ride some bikes? Ride your bikes right here. Which you, it's funny because when you're young, it all sounds great and amazing. It's like, I want to focus on work. That's what I'm going to do. I'm gonna, great, I have a bike, I have a place, I have, like, want to play video games? I'll play bing bong. Here you go. Because they don't want you to leave. And I remember working at one of the ad agencies back in Miami. It's like, that was like, we were known as a sweatshop. And we got agency of the year one year. And the cover of Creativity Magazine was all the creative directors in a sweatshop-like environment. And it was like a pride thing.
Right. They, they designed the cover, right? Like, oh, no.
Look, this is great. Yeah.
Let's go with the sweatshop idea.
This is fantastic. I'm like, yeah, they got it into the year. They got lots of awards. They made lots of money. But it's like, if you left the office before 9:00 PM, it's like, dude, you're not a team player.
Yeah.
It's like, what are you doing? I think there was one time where it was like, I, you know, we had scooters. So I had, was riding my scooter all over the office. It was Sunday, like at three in the morning, probably. And it was like the one time that probably didn't see anybody else.
Wow.
But usually there was usually some, a team and, you know, that made you keep going and making you work hard because you saw the creative director with the production assistant, with the CEO, you know, all at the office, working hard. But it was still, it's, it's, it's hard to keep up on you in that environment.
And there's something about a creative job.
My wife doesn't understand, by the way. She's like, how do you not work nine to five? Like, I don't understand.
Right, right. You need those spaces, not to do nothing, but you need those spaces to just kind of think and allow, almost allow yourself to waste time, waste time on ideas that probably won't go anywhere. You know, and I think that that would be harder to do when literally somebody's always over your shoulder. You know, because it looks like you're not doing anything. It's like, no, I'm, I'm, I'm doing essential, uh, creative work when it comes, I'm just working through ideas. And so that's why I think, you know, for me anyway, being able to be in my own space, in my own home is, is critical for that. Because I don't have, I can work in whatever way I want without having the, the sense that, you know, somebody is, is looking in and, you know, wondering, what the hell is he doing?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I think that, you know, there's multiple different types of people who work, like to work in different environments. You know, you're probably one of those people that's like, you love, you know, having that isolation and just being in your own space and having your own timeline to be able to come up with your ideas. Now let's shift gears a little bit because as if, you know, being a creative in the advertising industry is not hard enough. You decided to actually get involved in the school district and you decided to run for the school board. How did that come about? What made you do something so crazy? And then, uh, yeah, how did that happen?
I wish I had like a really good answer to this, but there are still times when I'm like, I don't really know. Why did I do that? So the, the, I guess the most linear explanation is, um, there was back a few years ago now. We had, uh, you know, a few municipal bonds that were floated through the district. And obviously I'm not going to get into, you know, one side or the other on that. That's, that's very well treaded territory. But I, I just got involved in, on social media of like just the, the, let's just say, the conversation around yay or nay, around those initiatives. And I, you know, I, I felt like this was something that there was just, there was competing information out there. And, and I just felt like there was a need for, for someone to step in and maybe just, you know, offer facts and all that stuff. So that's kind of like how I, at the time, I didn't even have anybody in the school district. My, my two youngest, my two youngest, my two children. My two youngest and my, you know, two older.
The older fake children.
Yeah, yeah, that don't exist. Uh, my, my oldest child was on her way into kindergarten, right? So it's not even, by the way I was looking at it was like, there's no better time to get involved in early because then anything that happens now, well, my kids will see the full impact of it because they're just.
That it was your fault, dad.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah. This is all you're doing. So I, um, I, you know, I, it never, I didn't get involved. It was just piecemeal. Like one thing, you know, you get involved in, in, in social media. And then you find yourself, you know, getting a little bit more involved on social media. And then like you kind of ask yourself like, well, am I going to be somebody that's on the sideline? Or am I going to get involved? You know, am I going to be the guy that's complaining to the coach? Or am I going to pick up a clipboard and, you know, coach the team myself? And that's not the most direct analogy because the, the school board is not, you know, coaching the team necessarily. But, you know, I, I've always been somebody that I, I mean, I hate to, I hate to be so blunt. I, uh, I just don't like complaining, you know? And I, I feel, I feel like less of a person if I'm just on the sidelines, like you should do it this way. And I, I, at the same time, I totally respect people who offer their, their feedback and, and all that. Everybody firmly believe being a parent is hard enough, you know, trying to cobble together a living is hard enough. So I, you know, I'm not saying like, if you don't get involved, you know? But it's just for my own sake, I, there comes a point where you just, you gotta get, the next step is to just get involved. And so that's kind of what I did. And, um, you know, it wasn't, uh, it was, every step of the way was one of those things, you know, I'd be buying lawn signs. I'm like, I'm buying, I'm a guy that's buying lawn signs? How, how did this happen? You know, it certainly wasn't an ambition at any point. I driving by, you know, I'd see my name on a lawn sign. My kids don't look, you know, like as if it's something to be ashamed of. It was an out of body experience and it still kind of is. Uh, but I'm glad I did it and, and I'm, you know, I don't, uh, although I still don't really know why I did it, I don't regret having done it.
Well, it's got to be the big paycheck that the people from the board get, right?
Yeah, well, that's the.
It's so much.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of zeros in that check. In fact, it's all zeros.
Do you think that there's a misconception that people think that like school board is just making money on the side? It's like, that's why they're like charging you so many taxes. It's like, oh, well, they, of course they want to bring up their taxes. They want to make so much money. They're so crooked or blah, blah, blah.
I think there is a fundamental misunderstanding about what the board is. And I think that people conflate the board leadership and the district leadership. And they think that, you know, there's, there's the superintendent, assistant superintendents and the central administration team, which cycles down to principals, all that stuff. All of those people are paid through the yearly tax levy. The school board is a completely unpaid, uh, body that sits on basically between the people, the community and the district leadership. We are just the, you know, we are there to serve a couple of different roles. One being oversight role to make sure that, you know, that the direction of the district is something that the, the community approves of. And then to be involved in certain legal discussions, legal decisions, contracts. And then, uh, I think the biggest, the most regular role is putting forth and approving a budget. We, the, the school board is not involved in, you know, whether Johnny gets suspended or not. And it is, it is a little bit of a gray area where like, I totally get it. Parents come to me to voice their complaints about whatever. And maybe a complaint may be even overstating it because they feel comfortable with me. They know me or, or they at least know that, you know, I'm on the board and they can approach me. And I, I do try to, you know, caution people like, there's, there are some questions that would be better asked directly to your principal or even to the superintendent. But I, I, I understand that being a representative, quote unquote, of the people does come with a responsibility that I sought and accepted. And, uh, you know, so I will always try to, you know, pass on concerns and try, or try to, you know, bring them up in discussion, you know, if it's feasible and reasonable to do so.
So what you're trying to say is that when we were at the birthday party, it was incorrect of me to like ask for the right teacher for my.
That's right.
Kid.
That's right.
Wasn't appropriate for me to do that at that point?
That was very unethical.
Oh geez, I'm so sorry about that. Oh my goodness. Now let's talk a little bit about, you know, we have a, a little bit of a new situation going on, going into this new school year. There's a lot of.
Why was going on?
No, something happening?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't want to get demonetized by saying the C word. But yes, no. So now because of this pandemic, we're going to be going into a new system of schooling. Where kids are going to be going to school twice a week and three days, uh, offline or online or whatever you want to call it. And a lot of people have a lot of questions. They want to know like what's going to happen. You know, there's a big meeting coming up, I believe on Monday.
Uh, new, yeah, next, uh, board meeting, work meeting.
So, yeah. So, you know, so we have the hybrid schedule. Why can't we go full time? Why can't we go full online? Why do we have to be somewhere in between? What's going on?
Yeah. So the, it really comes down to just, uh, the technological limitations of the school buildings. So as you know, you need, uh, you need wifi and you need bandwidth and we don't have enough of, 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 of that. So, you know, I, I get it how technically or how practically it could work, right? A lot, and I, I thought this initially myself. When a teacher is teaching to half the class, hey, just have a laptop open, right? And just live stream it to everybody at home. But you, you, first you try to imagine every teacher doing that. That would consume a lot of bandwidth. The school district is, the, the, the school buildings are just not set up. They, they don't have that, that capability. Even if it's not even clear, you know, if a handful could do it at one time. It's not even like, oh, we'll just stagger it. So, nah, it's, it doesn't exist. So the, yeah, that, that would be a, a better situation if the capability was there, but it's not. And that's just a, a reality that we have to contend with. And so that's why the district is doing a plan where they're recording lessons on Mondays. And then those will track the, uh, the curriculum. And then those will track the, uh, the curriculum throughout the week. So that even though they're not quote live, it's sort of like, you know, in, uh, T V recorded in front of a live studio audience. That's kind of like the idea there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, and why can't we go back full time? Why can't we have our kids, you know, we have a lot of locases here in the area. It's not like we have a hotspot going on, you know, why can't we just do that?
So the, this is, uh, this where you have to just adhere to the New York State Health Guidelines. So New York's, uh, New York State via, uh, Governor Cuomo has, although he has approved in-person instruction, that comes with a big caveat. As long as you can maintain social distancing in the buildings. So you start looking at just the buildings themselves, like how much space do we have? How many kids do we have? Is this mathematically even possible to do? And the answer was no, which by the way, is the answer that most school districts have come to. There, there aren't school districts with, you know, just empty buildings lying around in case this were to happen. Which is why, uh, you know, you have to then split the kids up into cohorts and, uh, because that creates the extra space necessary, um, to actually adhere to the, the social distancing guidelines as prescribed by the New York State Department of Health. So, you know, again, would it be, would it be ideal if everybody could go back to school and be safe? Yes. But, you know, we can't get a return to school plan approved unless we adhere to the guidelines that have been set forth.
Yeah, no, it's such a tricky situation because every parent out there, it doesn't matter who, what, what, um, political part of the officiate affiliate with or religion, whatever it is. Every parent wants to have their kids go back to school. That's what everybody wants. But we also have to be smart and see what's going on and pay attention to what's happening and see that it's not convenient right now. Uh, and I think a lot of people get angry for the people that say it's like, well, I don't know if I'm going to see my kid back to school or I'm going to do online learning. It's like, no, we all want our kids to go back to school, but, you know, and then you have the other, also the people who are saying, well, like, it doesn't affect kids quite as, quite as much or whatever. I was like, all right, but what if it's your kid, your kid, the one that gets sick? You want to see your kid with COVID and see how he reacts to it. That's what I would say. It's like, you know, I, I don't, I don't want my kid to be sick. And also on the other side, it's like, you know, what if you have health, health problems as a parent and, you know, there's been plenty of times where I've been laying down with my kid to put him to bed and all of a sudden he'll use a cup right in my face. And it's like, okay, and I've gotten sick from my kid being going to school. So it's, it's something that's going to happen. People are going to bring it home. They're going to get sick. So.
And I would say to that, you know, one of the, I, I don't know, I can't speak to other districts, just to Cornwall. Both on the board and in the district administration. You have people who currently have children in the school district. So these are not discussions that, you know, anybody is, is blind to. I mean, we're having them just as much as anybody else. And I think that's an important thing for people to understand. We, we all feel this very deeply, you know, and, and we know what the stakes are. And that, that kind of concern informs the, the decision-making. You know, you have, when you get involved in, in this kind of thing, you know, the, uh, you always look at then the kids throughout the school district, there's thirty-two kid, thirty-two hundred kids roughly. And you, you, you kind of, you take them on as your own kids. I mean, you really do. Um, you, you, you look at the, the kid who's falling behind is just like if your kid was falling behind, what do we have to do for that kid? And something like this situation brings that kind of perspective, you know, it focuses that even more. So, uh, look, it's unprecedented, you know, everybody's, you know, trying to, to find the, the best balance, but, you know, at the end of the day, you have people that really care, uh, because in many cases it's their own kids that they're talking about.
Yeah. And I think that's what something to be, you should keep in mind. It's like, we're not, nobody's got a hidden agenda here. There's no hidden agenda. Everybody wants the best for their kids, for the best for every other kid out there. And we don't have a magic wand. We don't know when this is going to wait. We don't know when there's going to have a vaccine for this. Um, so I think everybody's trying to make the best of the situation that we're in and, you know, you know, we're trying to look at all the data. We're trying to listen to the local communities, the local officials and see what they have to say. And trying to make the best decision based on that. I was in the health and safety task force. And it was good to see people from all walks of life, from school administrators to teachers to, and you know, local officials to board members, to regular parents, voice their opinion about what they expected, you know, how things were going to work. And we're listening to people. We're trying to come up with the best solutions that we can, but you can't make everybody happy. And with everything that's going on, there's a lot of frustrations, but you know, you, everybody's trying to do their best, basically what I'm trying to say. You know, we're going to have to see how things go because there's going to be another battle when the vaccine comes out. Because people are going to be like skeptical. It's like, okay, is it any good? Who, who, who came up with this vaccine? Russia is saying that they have a vaccine now. So.
I saw that, yeah.
So it's like, okay, what's going to happen when the, you know, and, you know, that's not even projected to happen until January or February. So this is going to be a new normal for at least half the school year, if not the whole school year.
Yeah. I mean, I'm always cautious to put any date on anything because, I mean, there was, there's so much of it that, that we don't know and we can't look back. I mean, if the closest precedent for this happened over a hundred years ago, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to, to look back and say, you know, how does that apply to these times? So much unknown. I mean, what I've been telling people, you know, and this, this is beyond school. I mean, this is just as like, keep people in perspective, just about everyday life. Uh, this is, we're not living through the pandemic movie, you know, where there's going to be, you know, to be end of the, the second act, you know, somebody has a breakthrough in the, uh, in the antidote, you know? And, and suddenly we do a quick montage around the world and, you know, the, the boxes are arriving and then the main character.
It's not going to work out.
The main character rips the I V out of his arm. Like, it's not going to be that quick, you know? So we need to prepare ourselves for that. Um, and, you know, I hate to say we're all in this together, but, you know, I think a little bit more solidarity and, and patience around that is just to mentally prepare yourself. And again, that is separate from schools. That's just from, you know, managing your expectations for everyday life.
So speaking of we're all in this together, you know, that leads us to one of the things that we're going to have to deal with when the school starts is there's a lot, as we've seen on clips on all over the web and social media, there's a lot of people like, my kid's not going to wear a mask. It's my right not to wear a mask. You know, it's like, he's going to go to school or like, well, how do you expect a six-year-old, seven-year-old to wear a mask all day? What's going to happen then? What hap, what, what are kids going to, what are teachers going to do? What are parents going to do? What is the administration going to do?
Yeah. So again, it's kind of goes back to, uh, you know, what I was saying before about, um, health, uh, guidelines. You know, the, um, kids when entering a, a, a building, you know, in, in areas, in times when they cannot social distance, they have to wear a mask. So you, you, you can imagine what that would be when they can't be more than six feet away from each other. And, you know, that is a health requirement and it's not unprecedented, this kind of reasoning. I mean, you need to get certain shots before entering kindergarten. I mean, you could, you could apply for, you know, a, a personal exemption, like a faith-based exemption or, um, but, you know, there's a process around that. And so it's not like this is a new concept. So it kind of fits into that mold. And, you know, for anybody who, um, flaunts the rules. I mean, those are, now we're getting into kind of on the ground decisions, kind of like what I was referring to before, that the board doesn't get involved in, you know? I don't, I'm not going to, I'm not writing up the, uh, you know, the boilerplate copy for what teachers.
Put her in detention yourself?
Teachers are going to say to kids, you know, like, uh, but, you know, they, uh, principals and, and teachers will, will deal with that like they, like they would, you know, uh, other in-class in-school issues with an understanding of, you know, what the, the health guidelines are. I, I can't, you know, I can't speak to, I, I, I wish I had that kind of unmitigated power, you know? I, I don't. But, you know, that, that'll be something that, uh, you know, again, it's just going to be a, um, day-to-day decision that, that's, uh, made by the people on the ground.
All right. So I probably didn't bring this up before, but just as we're here talking, what's going to happen? Let's say that we start school, three weeks in, we're starting to see a spike in cases in Orange County or in our school, we're starting to get a few cases. Is that a time where we go into more of, um, do we wait for Cuomo to say, stop the schools? Do we go virtual learning or do we take the decision upon ourselves to do that? What happens then, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's so, it's all hypothetical, right?
Right, right.
So, you know, the, the chain of command is New York State Health Department, well, Governor, New York State Health Department. Uh, and maybe there are more parallel when I think about it really because the, it's not like the governor is politicizing the health department. But the New York State Health Department then, uh, cycles down to the Orange County Health Department, which then goes to the districts. So any decision to close schools would have to come from there. And you can't unilaterally just close your school district, you know, because, um, you just can't. And that, then there becomes, um, larger legal issues and around that. Now you can, you can modify your, your program conceivably, you know, I, I don't want to, it's just so hard. I know it sounds like an invasive answer, you know? But it's just so hard to, to say what the contingency, like what the contingency plan is, uh, for a situation that in itself has a million hypothetical variables.
Yeah.
Uh, but the big decisions are made at the state slash, um,
Health Department.
Uh, county health department level.
Yeah. Now what are you hearing from when you go out there and talk to the community, talk to people or people who are just, you know, grabbing you at a birthday party and be like, you have to do this. What are the?
I know some of those people.
Yeah, I know. What are they, what, what are some of the concerns that they, you're hearing from them?
A lot of it is, uh, I mean, it's stuff that you have, uh, you've represented so far. I mean, a, a, a lot of it, at the beginning of the summer, it was, you know, are we going to go back at all? And then, you know, you hear stuff around sports, around, um, extracurricular activities, you know? But it's not uniform. I mean, there are some people that want to go back completely, a hundred percent. Let's go back to normal. Other people are, are not there yet. You know, so I, it's, it's not even like there's just one theme. It's, it's coming from all different directions. And I think that's just because this is a very human moment for people. This, this cuts through what you think. This is now what you feel for a lot of people, you know, and you can, especially when your kids are involved, you know? You can tell somebody there's X percent risk of them catching COVID and, and within that group. Then it's, you know, X percent or point X percent, whatever, risk of, of, you know, this outcome. And for some people that will be comforting news, for other people, the same exact stat will be terrifying. And that comes down to how you view, you know, risk and, and, and things that are just so complicated emotionally. That I think that the best, what I try to do is just express empathy and know that I completely understand where people are coming from. And, I mean, look, the whole reason I got involved in this, to cycle back to, you know, why are you even doing this? Because I love my kids and, you know, just like anybody, any other father or, or mother would. And so when somebody comes to me with a question that I know is motivated by just their raw love of their children, of course I get that, you know? That's why I'm doing this in the first place. The unsatisfying part of it is, we don't have clear answers that, well, we don't have answers that will satisfy every one of those parents. You know, and again, it's, I, I wish that was the case, but you're just limited by things like, you know, government restrictions, space issues and stuff. But, you know, the, um, uh, trying to take it in honest approach to every one of the, the concerns. I think at the very least, people need to know that they're being heard. And, you know, if I can play a small role in that, then, then I'll, I'll do that. But I, I do think the, uh, you know, the district has done a really good job uh, over the summer of, of seeking input and through the task forces, as you mentioned, surveys, things like that. So I, I, I feel pretty good about that.
Now you brought up something, uh, that was really, uh, interesting that I forgot to ask you about is the, the whole sports situation. You know, there's a lot of kids out there that are going to their senior year. They're going to football or soccer or basketball or volleyball, the girls or whatever it is. And, you know, they want to know what's going to happen, what sports kind of fall within the guidelines where something like that could happen? Are they going to delay the sports till the spring? Like, have you guys had conversations about what's going to happen there?
Yeah. So first of all, this is a, uh, this is an issue too, as a former high school athlete. I, I, this is the thing that I probably think about the most. Just because, and it's, you know, sports, I get it. It's not, literally not life or death. But I still have a, I have a recurring dream. I get real personal here.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. So one of the recurring dreams that I've.
This is rated G.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm going.
Self-edit. No, it's a, it's the, probably the only recurring, it's one of the only two recurring dreams. I won't, this is not going to turn into this is my life with Brendan Carty, by the way. I'll only give you the one that, that is relevant. But it's, uh, I'm a senior in high school. And it's the senior year varsity baseball year. It's my last baseball year. And it's like, there's, there's two versions of the dream. The first one is like, I forgot my glove or something and, you know, I don't have pants. The second one is like strangely relevant to, to this time. It's April. I know the season should have started, but nobody's like made an announcement. And I'm walking around like, hey, guys, like, are we having a baseball season this year? And I was like, I guess, I don't know. I'm going to find the coach. You know, and it's just this weird thing that like this opportunity is slipping away from me. And I've thought about that so often throughout this whole situation because I would classify that dream, you know, waking up anxiety-ridden, like it has all the hallmarks of a nightmare. That's what it is. It's not a dream. It's not a pleasant dream.
Right.
And so by that measure, there are millions of kids around the country literally living a nightmare. And, you know, and there's unfortunately, and I guess this is like the theme of this conversation. There's not as, not much an individual district can do about it. I mean, you know, it takes two to tango. You can't just go out and play a baseball game against yourself. You need other schools to be on board. So these decisions come down through, you know, again, the same kind of state, county, uh, chain of command. And the only update that has, uh, you know, been made recently. And, and forgive me if, if there's been a more recent update because this was as of a couple of weeks ago. So there's the New York State, uh, I'm going to try to get the acronym right. I think it's the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, N S F A, I think is, is what, where they, how they go by. And, uh, they have pushed back, um, the start of football season, you know? But like it's, it just seems like we're, we're getting in the same incremental game, you know, like we'll push it back, we'll reassess and, you know, you can kind of game out how it would go from there, but they are being careful not to cancel anything, you know? So keeping the option open to perhaps have fall sports, um, later on. And I know that is a deeply unsatisfying answer for a lot of people because they may be two sport athletes and then they've got to choose maybe in the spring comes around. I totally get that. And as I explained, this is, it's, it occupies a big enough place in my psyche. I, it's, I, I'm, I'm still working through it. Uh, so I totally get it. But, um, yeah, I mean, it, it's as of right now, like a whole bunch of other things, it's an open question.
Right. I mean, not, not only sports, you guys talk about, you know, drama club, like there's some of the plays that the kids are probably looking forward to doing this year. Um, art classes, the band, uh, you know, it's, it, it's, I feel so bad for kids who have to go through this and they'll probably have to deal with it for years to come and have your nightmares, you know, they'll be talking about it in a podcast twenty years from now.
From space.
Oh my God. Yeah, right. From Mars.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe this will make them stronger, you know, it's a bummer. Like I played too many sports to count in high school and I would have been devastated if any of them, any of my seasons would have been cut short or, you know, cut or just plain not had them. So we'll, we'll see how it goes. I mean, we, we all want to have answers. We're all feeling empathy for the kids and what they're going through. And we're just trying to make the best decision, I guess.
I will say this, that, that, you know, you mentioned, you know, it's not just sports and that, that's absolutely right. You know, it's, it's other things, drama clubs and, um, I think the district has done a, a really good thing in, in preserving the specials, you know? Um, so music and, and art and gym, all that. So that's great. So at least, you know, it's not just going to be bare bones academic, you know, so there will be, you know, further enrichment. And as far as like the things like, uh, you know, the drama clubs here are running through the P T Os. And, uh, I, I, you know, full disclosure, my, my wife, she's just as gullible as I am. She's the, she's the, uh, president of the P T O at Lee Road. So, you know, we're just compiling unpaid, uh, public positions here. And, uh, so it's something we talk about all the time, like, you know, because in that structure, the elementary schools and the fourth grade year is like the senior year of, of varsity sports, right? Like if you waited all these years, you've been a, a shrub for like four years, waiting to get a speaking role when you're in fourth grade and it comes along and what, you're not going to even do it this year. So, you know, I know that those kinds of, of contingency plans are being made, like how do you do it in a way that's socially distanced? And nothing has been decided, you know, yet, but, um, there's, there's a lot, the one good thing that stands out about, you know, Cornwall's ability to deal with this. We have a lot of really involved, you know, motivated families. And that's why we have things like, you know, these, these plays to begin with. And that motivation is, does not go away. You know, maybe it gets transferred, maybe, you know, it, it goes, it finds its outlet in some other ways. But I think there are, there are people that are going to be really putting in the effort to, to figure this out for the kids. And so that, that gives me hope, you know, that, yeah, it's going to change things, but it's not like people are just going to sit around with, you know, sitting on their hands and all these kids are just going to have this lost year, you know, of, of none of these experiences. Well, collectively, and this goes beyond board or district, I think it just has a community. Collectively, I think we'll find a way and, and we'll, we'll make it worthwhile for a lot of these kids.
Yeah, definitely. And I think, uh, you know, a lot of the community has faith in the school board. I think we are, we're very lucky to live in. you know, a lot of the community has faith in the school board. I think we, we're very lucky to live in a very uh, good school district, uh, even from sitting in some of the meetings and listening to some of the challenges that the, even the kids face, uh, not to get too deep into the whole thing, but like the top 10% have like 99% average or something like that. And like, it's so hard to like stay above the fray because everybody's so small, everybody's working so hard and like, how do you deal with class numbers? So I know that the school puts a lot of thought into a lot of the issues that go into the school district. And I think the community knows this as well. So I think we're just going to wrap it up there. I think that was a pretty good ending point.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for being in the very first do-good podcast. I appreciate it. Uh, thank you out there, whoever's listening and, uh, make sure to stay tuned for more in the future. I really look forward to speaking with a lot of the people in the community and the people that are doing good and helping out. And, uh, until the next time, thank you very much. See you guys.